All right, thank you everybody for your patience. We'll now roll into the public session of our meeting. Other administrator, Mr. Strauss, Ms. Lee's, Ms. Fleming. We also have our, for a good word here, no, our fantastic building administrators all present here. All right, so we're going to roll through the first section before getting into the budget discussion here. Before I begin, is anybody recording the meeting? Thank you, sir. Great, thank you. And then we have late cam. So please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. My pledge allegiance. Student presentation to the committee. Do we have any superintendent's report?
I'm actually going to push it down so when I talk about, when we talk about budget and new business.
All right, we will move on to acceptance of minutes for the February 1st meeting. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I have two abstentions. The motion passes. I'll obtain a motion to approve the executive session minutes for February 1st.
So moved.
I have a motion, do I have a second? Any, any discussion? All right, seeing none, all in favor? And we have two abstentions, right? All right. Item number nine, public participation. Anybody here for public participation? All right, seeing none. Item number 10 of the agenda, FY '23 budget update.
Good evening. In your packet of the year-to-date general fund overview for FY '23. For revenues, as of this report, we were still waiting on the first payment for Chapter 71 transportation. We did receive the first payment just this week for $846,548. During the last Masbo conference, it was stated that the initial payment should represent 40% of the annual anticipated amount. But I am going to confirm with DESI because if we do that calculation, we'd be looking When I did look at the end-of-year report, that $2,116,370 represents reimbursement for those students living further than one and a half miles away from our schools at a 100% reimbursement level. Again, I will need to confirm this with DESI, that a 100% reimbursement level is accurate. And just a side note, the DESI did already state that they have no prediction just as of yet for FY '24 reimbursement rate. If we are going to receive a 100% reimbursement rate, it would mean an increase of $379,274 from the assessment sheet that you have. As far as expenditures, we are monitoring our spending. As I've stressed in previous meetings, we are still in a period of rising prices compared to our budget, in particular for utilities and various supplies. So far, we have experienced a light oil season due to favorable weather patterns. As we approach mid-March, we will be able to better predict where these costs will be estimated through the end of the remaining school year, although I have started the exercise of annualizing our costs to better see where the district may land. There are still a number of unknowns as we progress through the winter season, as it pertains not only to utilities but anything that may come up to address our buildings. The surplus that we are showing for instructional insurance benefits and custodial will likely diminish as the year progresses, as these are reduced with each payroll and vendor payable warrant cycle. I do believe there will be some savings captured, however, for payments to out-of-district as it relates to tuition residential, where we do have one student in particular with high needs that are unable to utilize our services, but we do have to plan for those. This situation could change at any time with a student return. Overall, our spend with an available balance after open purchase orders is $5.1 million and does seem favorable at this point compared to the prior year. And until I get that update for Chapter 71, that's when I will then update the FY '23 assessment sheet.
Related to the residual funds for the out-of-district, can that be rolled into any revolving fund for special education for next year?
No, the only fund that we would be able to roll forward balances, for which we already are, would be Circuit Breaker. And so we would not be able to roll any of that forward. It would fall into E&amp;D and be part of the computation for E&amp;D.
And what are we estimating that would be?
Well, it really depends. I mean, so far, I could say that you probably have about $200,000. And obviously, as each month goes with that one particular student, that number will grow.
That could change.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions on FY '23? Okay, moving on to new business, 11A, 2023-2024, school year calendar, first reading. Any questions from the committee?
Yeah.
Two, yeah, go ahead, Jean.
No, go ahead.
So just, just two things that, in talking to Cheryl, obviously down at Hall did, did get brought up is, the presidential primary is on March 5th, right? That's a full-day election at FES, so I'd like to try to see if we can come up with some resolution, maybe shifting a PD day or somehow trying to make it so there's not as many staff and students in the building at that point, just given our recent concerns on safety and making sure that's taken care of, obviously, if there's the ability to get an extra police officer there as a last resort to make sure that things are safe. I would appreciate that. The second one is April 1st, which is the local town election, and that's a half-day election, so at FES, so maybe there's something we can do with a half-service, a half-day-in-service day or something there where we can kind of free up and get staff and families and students out of there. Those are the two dates that stuck out to me, but just throwing that out there for discussion.
No, and that was definitely one of mine. My other one was, why is Juneteenth in green?
It's the last day of school.
That's why?
It's the last, yeah.
Green, go home.
Green, go home. Unless it snows.
It happens to fall on the last day.
Gotcha. All right, yeah, so I actually didn't think about March, I was thinking about the April.
I think it brings up the overarching concern, we're probably looking at four or five days between, we had this last year with the primaries in the beginning of September. We have, so any election that's in FES is going to impact the calendar, we're talking four or five days throughout the year.
So we did start with the 7th, so we moved, traditionally, we have had the day after Halloween off for, for students, and it was PD. I made the recommendation, I understand it has been a tradition, but I made the recommendation that we move PD to Election Day, and there, so there would be no school for students. Staff, when we do that election, when we do that PD, it generally is here at the high school, so there will be no staff, no students at all in the building. I know we did have a conversation with Cheryl in regard to having the back entryway be the in-and-out for people rather than coming through the school, so that, that was a positive. Certainly, we can look to move March 1st, which is an in-service half-day, to March 5th.
That'd be great.
That's an easy one. April's going to be a little more challenging, but the question is, do we move May's half-day to April? We can look at that.
Either way, so that's a great, and I appreciate the willingness to do that. Either way, I think we would need an additional police presence there for at least the half-day, if that makes sense.
There would be anyway, I would think.
Right. So just, just to make sure, that's all.
Yeah, I mean, historically, we did not have school when we had the town doing elections there, and then that kind of went away.
Right, the last few years, you have had school.
Yes.
Right. And this year was the first year, from what I understand, Mr. Ward, in which we had a second police officer who stood by the stairs, because there has to be a police officer in the voting area.
Correct.
They can't leave. So this year, Mr. Ward and I met with, with the police chiefs and they agreed to bring a second officer in who stood at the stairs. And that's very costly, and we certainly know that. I do want to make sure that the committee is okay, well, I know we haven't voted on it, but my purpose for moving everything from the 1st, November 1st, which is the day after Halloween, to November 7th.
Oh, that's good.
I think it's more of your teachers who are going to be.
I am too. I think the day after is going to be.
Increase candy from the night before, that's all.
Yep.
I have a question. If you were to move the May half-day to April, is that what you just suggested, perhaps?
Yes.
I think we need to talk with our principals to see how that impacts planning for the following year.
Well, that PD day doesn't affect the planning for the following year. The planning for the following year is done during staff meetings and so forth. That's one of the learning module days, the professional development days for the staff, so moving that date only affects the time between their two sessions.
Right, you would go March to April rather than March to May.
Yeah.
So maybe I'm wrong. Historically, that half-day was often used, was always used for class placement. Is that not the case anymore? Do we do those, class placement, set another time?
Placement for the high school's happening currently with the middle school and high school conversations, and those are happening.
I'm sorry, I was talking to the elementary. I apologize, I shouldn't have said that.
You then, not I, no.
Okay, okay, okay.
Any other questions?
Actually, sorry, what's the presidential primary date again?
The 5th, the 5th of March.
I think you bring up a good point with safety, including traffic.
Yeah.
You know, obviously, there's precedent in other districts around presidential primaries and presidential elections. Obviously, town elections are important, but given the high amount of voting on those days, it's a tough day to have school in session.
It is.
Even with a police presence, it's just the combination of traffic and the number of voters coming through, that's, that's a tough one.
Yep.
Anybody else have questions? So November 23rd is a school committee, sorry, August 23rd is a school committee member meeting planned. Is that the same night as orientation for high school?
That hasn't been planned yet. That could work around you.
Great, because it's always been an interesting thing when we get over the PA. All right, those in the gym, now move to the auditorium, those in the auditorium, now move to.
You want to see the inner workings.
So, yes, so I.
You've been much more mindful this year about what you've asked for.
And I'm not saying it has to happen on the 23rd either, but if we can just make sure that those are not impacted that way. The other question is, we always wrangle with the end of the year being so late, right? So is there a particular reason why we're not in school on the 22nd of December for a half-day?
It's a Christmas Eve holiday. It's a Christmas Eve holiday.
Christmas Eve is a holiday?
It's a contract, I believe.
That's probably true. We can check that out.
But, okay.
We were in school the 23rd this year.
Yeah, it is kind of silly.
We were. And there was an issue with contracts, with people having that day off, like elsewhere with custodians and central offices, and there's just different people.
But.
So it threw off a lot of people's contracts, so we were trying to be mindful of that going forward. Doesn't have to be.
No, but technically speaking, a holiday that falls on a Sunday is on the Monday, and then that pushes it out. So the reality is, it would be the 26th would be the day that you have that day off, not the 22nd. If it was the Saturday, then you do celebrate on the Friday.
That's easily fixed.
Technically, I'm just looking at, we're already at June 18 without any, I don't want to say that, or let a word.
Don't say that word.
So.
Yep.
So.
So we'll, I'll move that.
If we add that day, and then.
And that means we're switching.
Are you all in favor of March 5th as a day off because of the presidential election?
Time is time, right? You could take that whole day off theoretically, right?
A half-day still counts as a day. That's what's the only thought.
Yeah.
If you add the March 5th, you're still back at the timeframe that we're looking at a June 18th, last day of school.
Correct.
Well, we always go that. We start after Labor Day, and that's, that's just how this calendar, you got to do your 180 days. If you start after Labor Day, it puts you well into June.
Got it, okay.
We've been, we've been in bad snow years to June 30th.
So the idea is, we want March 5th off.
Correct.
The whole day?
The whole day.
Yeah, we do.
That's going to go over real big with the public.
And I think it's a give and take, right? So the communities have enjoyed that half-day before a long weekend in their planning, but we can't have that and trying to address safety concerns, right? So I think that's something that we'll just have to make sure that we address, that's the reason why we're doing it. And obviously, I don't think there's any other suitable building in Free Town to host an election.
All three precincts are there.
Yeah.
Okay.
And we'll have to move May.
So we'll have a second meeting at the next meeting, we'll go see these.
Yeah, this is just the first reading.
Changes.
So, just a quick question, sorry. So March 5th, is that going to be another full PD?
Full day off.
Or just a day off for everybody? That's what you're saying?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I just want to clarify for, day off for everybody, no PD.
Can we replace that with?
We're going to talk about whether or not to turn it into PD. Yeah, I think we may look to turn it into PD, I don't really contractually.
Is, is the August, the last week in August where it says new teacher mentoring orientation and prep day, is one of those a PD day? Is that what prep day is?
That's our opening day, where everyone goes back.
Yeah, so everybody goes back, they're in the classrooms, that Thursday, they're in their classrooms, set up, do all of that.
Okay, so that's not a professional development day?
Opening day is the 30th, they go back into their classrooms, one of those two will be some PD, yes.
Like trainings for, yeah.
State trainings, all those kinds of things. What are you saying, push back one of those?
I'm wondering if we could, probably a no, but move that professional development down to March 5th. So we just brought in staff and use, as you, as you said before, the district would have no staff in Free Town Elementary.
I think the concern for that day might be that we're getting the new student services platform, and that day would be used for training staff on that. So we have a lot of people affected by that, it's not, so this year, we used Aspen and Promethean Board trainings and so forth. This coming year, we have the new student services platform that's moving over to Aspen, so I don't know, and I'm not speaking for Ashley, but I'm thinking on behalf of her that there might be some reluctance to removing that day entirely. And I think, you know, we'd have to talk with Erin and.
Yeah, we'll, we'll come up with something for the next reading.
Okay.
Any other questions? All right. Letter D, Reed's Collaborative Agreement.
So you also have in front of you the agreement that we sign every year with Reed's Collaborative. Currently, we have five students that are enrolled. We also contract with them for deaf and hard-of-hearing services, as well as they do multiple evaluations for us. There is nothing that has dramatically changed in here, but it does need to be signed and approved at a school committee meeting. Most looks up.
I have a motion in a second, any discussion? Seeing, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion unanimous. Out-of-state field trip approval.
So this one's a little bit different. You have in front of you that, and Caitlin is here, she can talk about it, our majorettes coach would like to take the majorettes to Merrimack, New Hampshire on March 18th and to Derry, New Hampshire on April 15th for competitions. In-state competitions have recently been canceled, although I don't know why. Do you know why?
No, but it was done very late, that's why.
Yep. Team does not need a boss, they travel with their parents, that, that's very typical. There are 24 majorettes in grades one through 12. So because we do have students going out of state, we need to bring them here.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion in a second, any discussion? Just a point, is this a campus program majorette, or is this a school-based?
I'd like you to tell me. It's one of those, you know, sort of like cheerleading is a club, not athletics.
Yep.
So it would be under my purview. I'm sorry, you won't redo that. So it'd be under my purview, you know, for cheerleading. I'm not exactly sure. So I know that competitions and, and different things are arranged through campus programs like the other things, but just like our Life Skills Unified Programs, they're not under that, but Jim Cabusio was just wonderful enough to provide those services. So I wish I could give you a straighter answer.
Totally agree. So I guess my question is, where's the registration? Is it through campus programs or is it in our high school? So when they sign up for majorettes, and that's why, because it's a one through 12, and I thought it was under campus programs.
I think, I think it is.
So, so my point, I'm happy to approve this, I'm not saying we do that, but I, I think it doesn't fall into the school committee purview that requires a vote, because that's a campus programs piece, it's not a, you know, under the school day perspective. That's just my, my point here. I'm happy to do a vote, I'm happy to have that, but we should probably.
It involves students going out of state.
My only, my only response to that would be, we do have a high school majorettes team that performs at games.
So let's just approve it.
And so, you know, I, I, the younger kids are, are part of, and I'll find out whether or not it's campus, but we do have a high school program, similar to DECO or any other program, that will be going out of state.
Done.
It used to be called competition majorettes.
Yes, correct.
Oh, true.
Different from high school majorettes.
Correct. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? We're going to Merrimack. And all of you guys have signed up, so bring your batons. All right, FY '24 budget review. When we dive into it, so the first half of this is really diving into questions that committee members have around the five schools, and we have the experts associated with that.
Just so you know, in fairness, Mr. Higgins went home sick, so he thought his wife.
That's where most of my questions were. Convenient. I'll, I'll start with the regional income. Do you have any questions related to the five schools or anything?
No.
Okay. I, as per usual, have a lot of questions, but I will reserve until anybody, other members that would like to jump in front and, and ask questions.
Why don't you just go, Steve?
All right. So I will, my first overall question is, the supply.
I just landed that there, yep.
Thank you.
You're supposed to pass it on.
I'm watching my winter hibernation here, so I, I do notice that supplies was sort of flat-lined throughout all the buildings here, and with inflation and everything of that, I'm just wondering if there's a reason why, obviously, it's kind of intuitive, because that's just going to increase the budget request, but why we didn't increase the supply line items?
So those requests did come in by the principals.
Okay.
They did look at their historical spend, as did I, and, you know, quite honestly, I think there have been some years where we had some unused monies in those areas. So the, the numbers that you have are the representation from the principals, and were not cut by the administration. So in, in a lot of cases, it did happen to be level-funded.
I will say, our principals do a really good job of doing an exceptional job with what they have, so they're not looking at excess. And we look at supplies, I think part of the question becomes, how do we define supplies? But in my conversations with them, they're in a good place.
I just want to ask on that, though, wasn't there some pre-purchasing that goes on with that? You know, it's like buying at the end of the year if you had something to do.
So in some cases, they might look at their inventories.
Yeah. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Where we are seeing above contractual numbers on the salary ranges, is that lane changes or what?
Correct.
You know, for example, if we look at, you know, it's, it's, there's a number of them that are any between 5 and 13% increases here, so.
So I do have a number of level advancements at Assawamstead, I have four, Free Town Elementary, I have three, Grace, I have two, the middle school, I have eight, the high school, I have five. And these are level advancements that were anticipated, that were not previously budgeted for.
Okay.
We also have just a small number of anticipated retirements at this time, we only have three. We do have one or two individuals that are considering, that could change our budget estimates, but at that, at this time, we only have three individuals.
This goes across the schools here, too. Have we had to dip in a lot to the nurse substitute rates or anything like that?
No, and actually, we still have some of those grants available from last year, so theoretically, we should be utilizing those sources first.
Okay. And a question on the physician, why unequal amounts?
So if it's a guidance counselor, for example.
No, the physician.
Oh, physician.
Yeah, yeah, sorry.
My apologies. That is exactly what we're billed, and I don't know if it's based on headcount or demand, but that's just historic.
So that's what we're billed independently for each of the schools?
Correct.
So we don't get one, okay.
Correct.
All right.
I think one of the schools was $50 off, I think that's the only variance I found when we did all of them.
Okay. You, related to that, and how, so do we have any numbers on opt-out at all as of yet?
So far, we have one individual.
After all that.
However, we are going to be engaging in a, in an educational campaign, if you will.
Got it.
Not just for opt-out, but for the limited network plan that we also added last year.
Right.
And then this year, we did get, I don't know if we want to talk about health insurance at this point, but we did get just yesterday, our actual rate offer, which is 9.77%, and I know that we have included an 8%, but that 8% also did include some room in the census. So that is enough room to, to take, absorb a 9.77. As a reaction to the 9.77, we are looking at alternative options that would give the same plan design. We're working with our insurance consultants, and we're going to be going out to the market, basically, hoping that we're either going to get a better number than the 9.77 from our current provider, or we may be looking for another provider that can offer the same plan design, hopefully at a lower price. So we are looking at multiple options right now. Mr. Strauss and I were on a call today for about 45 minutes with those insurance consultants, and we, they have outlined some really good action steps for us. I do think ultimately, the district will be looking at increases. For the past four years, we have had markedly low increases and/or decreases. In fact, I think we've averaged a decrease. In fact, I think we've averaged a decreased rate over the last four years, which is pretty much unheard of. And so now at this time, I think the market is catching up to us. Does not mean, though, that we shouldn't shoot for, you know, a better rate.
I think it would be helpful, especially as we, we talk with the towns, if we were to take out insurance as well as special education, which are two things that really we don't have a lot of control over.
Correct.
What would our percentage increase be from an overall budget perspective?
That's.
Right? I think we have some clarity as far as, obviously, the big lion's share is going to be the salaries, but I, I think would also paint a different picture as we have collaborative discussions with everybody that, you know, what is truly in here and how do we break that down a little bit? Assawamsted, does it have a sub-separate classroom? Assawam- it does, okay. And how many are in that?
There's six.
So the SEL room is the sub-separate, or those two separate?
The sub-separate is the SEL room.
Okay, great, thank you. Any other questions on AES?
Go ahead, John.
I didn't see a line item for art supplies. And I did at the other schools. I didn't know if that was included in somewhere else that I, I didn't see or.
So.
For Assawamsted.
So the art supplies, we actually charge it through the PTO budget, because she does square one art and always makes between $4,000 and $6,000 for that, which is handled through the PTO budget. So we don't have an art, we've never had a single art line item at Assawamsted.
Does Articalusa also contribute that in?
Articalusa pretty much pays for itself. But the PTO has a line item that they fund all the supplies and everything for Articalusa, so that's like a separate event.
Good, Barry.
First of all, thank you to the PTO.
Yeah.
That's very helpful.
Yes, they also help, with, just speaking of supplies, they spent $15,000 last summer on wish lists for teachers and they're very instrumental in getting teachers what they want in the, with their classes.
PTO coming in real quick? Ms. Penalt, I know that you know that this committee has been very interested in paraprofessionals, grade-level paraprofessionals. Can you give me a rough idea about, and I know I'm looking down the road, but that's what this is for, about how many minutes a day, a week, I don't know which one that is, would a classroom teacher have paraprofessional support?
So how, sure, so we actually schedule them based on need. So for example, a grade one paraprofessional across six classrooms, when, we make sure that the teachers sporadically spread out their small group time. So when they're doing small group is when the paraprofessional is in that classroom to provide intervention and work with that group. So it's pretty much between, anywhere between 20 minutes to 40 minutes per classroom, depending on what the intervention or what the need is that they're in there for.
That's per day?
Correct.
Okay. And that's the same with first, second, third?
That's first, second, and third, and then kindergarten has paras across the board in every classroom.
Okay. Thank you. I hope at some point, we can get more paras. I know we're a long way down the road, but it is on, on my radar. That sounds great, thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Penalt? We're not going to let you go that easy, just yet. Yes, Miss Barry.
I'm sorry. The textbooks, these are replacement textbooks for $1,037?
Yes, consumables that we use for like I writing, yes.
Great, thank you, thank you.
Moving on to FES. Anybody would like to start or I can? All right. So obviously, the big change is pre-K, right? So help me with some of the numbers here. Last year, or this current year, we have 51. Next year, we're looking at 50, but we're also looking to add a pre-K teacher. So can we, what's, I know this is a big question that was asked at our last regional FinCom meeting, so just wanted to see if we can get some more information related to that.
Again, the notes come, yep.
Did you want me to start, Mr. Ward, and then you can add, because I do have Ms. Boulay's rationale here.
Okay.
So I'm just going to read it as is. Last year, the evaluations for pre-K totaled 49 for the 21-22 school year. This year, as of the beginning of January 2023, the district had 35 evaluations completed thus far for pre-K alone. With the EEC regulations, the district can only have a certain ratio, a specific ratio for pre-K classrooms. For a 15 total students, for example, you would have eight role model to seven IEP students. Given the increase in evaluations and IEP eligibility, the Director of Student Services anticipates needing an additional section of the pre-K for the 23-24 school year.
Okay.
I'm not sure if there's anything more Mr. Ward could add, but.
So we're at 35 to date and we had 49 all of, of the prior year?
Correct.
Right, okay. And if, if we don't, and I understand the ratio perspective, but what if we don't meet? We have another section, but we don't have enough role models for that section?
You have to have that ratio.
Right, you have to have the ratio.
And those are the model students' pay tuition.
That's correct.
But usually, there's a waitlist.
I was just going to say.
There always was.
Yes, it's, it's pretty big.
Okay. That's not a concern.
No.
From that aspect of it, okay? And, and are we making an assumption of the tuition in this budget of that extra section? X-section?
So in the separate funds for which we, that's, that's all in a separate fund.
The tuition base, yeah.
So it's not in the operating fund. So that would not go through your operating fund.
Any particular reason why not?
Because it has to be maintained as a revolving fund for, for state law, I could.
But we can use last year, so we could flow into E and D and then use it, right? Or no?
So there was a, I want to say it's a $10,000 fund balance.
Okay.
It's, I have the fund balances here, they're not, I don't think they're significant, based on my memory. If I can look it up really quick. $25,000.
Okay.
That's a good thing, I'm sorry about that.
I think that this probably is a question for you, Mr. Ward, but probably for Mrs. Boulay. Is 15 the cap? Is that a cap or could we, could we bring in 18 students with?
I think it's a cap.
Or 20 or?
We just have to have the ratio, I think.
I know we have to have the ratio.
Regulations say 15 students.
Is that a cap?
So from Area 6 of the Early Childhood Program Standards, regulations cannot exceed 15 students. We have a model student, seven IEP students.
So that is cap? Yeah, it seems like that's it.
The other thing I-
Maybe waiver options.
The other thing I can note for the school committee is that these positions, the, the existing pre-K position is partially funded from special education grants and the operating budget. This request is at 100% level to be funded from operating, because we don't believe we'll have the available grant funds.
And, and we say section, that's a half day, right?
Yes.
Yes, it's a half day, yep. It is.
So 15 in the morning, 15 in the afternoon. Okay, so that's how the math is, because I was still figuring out how two teachers go into 51.
Sure.
That's correct.
Sure.
But, okay, thank you. We're expecting an additional 23 kindergarten students next year?
Again, we go by the town census again. I haven't heard the preliminary just yet, but it could be one year, Ms. Owens, it could be 75 again, it could be 110, it's just depending on what the numbers are going to be coming on in.
Okay.
When do we get those numbers from the town, Mr. Ward?
Relatively soon.
I would think so.
No, no, it is relatively soon.
This is a question for both, because we're seeing an increase in staffing of three people at AES and FES. What specifically are those three positions?
So.
Two paraprofessions?
Yeah, so the, the paras, the two paras at AES are rolled into the special education budget. So when you actually go to the AES budget, you, you won't see any new position requests, because they're all being rolled into the student services budget. They are being rolled into the FTE, however, because when we've shown FTEs, we've shown school-wide, that includes custodians.
Okay.
Yes. I did recompute the FTEs three separate times to make sure that they were accurate. The other thing that FTEs take into account is if something is being funded by a grant, it's, it's only showing what's being funded by the operating budget in the FTE computation. So for example, if we have a teacher who's being funded 50% from a grant, I'm only going to show a .5 FTE for that individual.
So any of these increases at both the two primary schools are being funded by the, not the, operated by the special education budget? Is that what we're saying?
That, that is likely to be true. I do have the analysis just required of the FTEs, where I've basically recomputed it down to the 10th degree.
So I, I think this is shared by most members here. Now it's kind of tough, right? We always come up into May-June timeframe when we talk about class sizes, right? So if we're, if the numbers hold true, 20 in kindergarten is a problem, right? And so, and it's, it's not factored in the budget, but we would have to figure out how to do that, you know what I mean, do that. So I think it's something that we have to keep in mind, because it's always been, has been a concern, do that. And again, we have move-ins and those type of things, okay? Same question about the textbook. Any new textbooks coming in?
No, those are.
Is this more consumables? Okay.
So I do have for FES, the assumption is that we're going to invite a new material called Generation Genius. Has that changed?
That's actually an online program. It's not a curriculum, it's a, it's being swapped out for the Mystery Science.
That's.
Science.
Terry, could you say that again, please?
It's science, it's an online science platform that costs a little bit less than Mystery Science does. And actually, all three buildings, Gray's, AES and FES requested that we make that switch, because STEM Scopes is so full and robust that they, the needs of introducing units and so forth is met by the information and the format given on Generation Genius. So they're very similar platforms, they're just, the Generation Genius has a little bit less cost.
So is that what Steve just pointed out, the $3,586 is for that?
I'm sorry, Sheri, I couldn't hear.
$3,000.
The textbook line, $2,586 is for that?
So no, the Generation Genius costs $1,526 for FES. There are, you know, a series of ebbs and flows of pricing differences from the prior year. The other item that's significant to note is the elimination of Discovery Ed, because I guess it's not being heavily utilized at this time. You know, and certainly, if the committee wants an analysis, I can show you, I know I've done this in prior years, where I've sent you the changes of each product and the change in prices and whatnot.
There is a discrepancy in that textbook line, so is it consumables, is that?
There is consumables that will need for the math, the ready math program, right.
And multiple grades, is that different than AES or?
It's depending on, we usually go by what the math curriculum is, what they're utilizing in, in the, in the classroom. Sometimes the student workbook that they'll use, those type of, so that's why you might see a little bit between Ms. Penalt and I, just a discrepancy in that piece.
But there is consistency in purchasing consumables with the two schools.
I want to, yes, I would say yes, to the best of my ability from talking.
And sometimes there's just extras, and so they don't order quite as much one year.
Sure, that's correct.
So as long as it's.
It's a consumable.
Yes.
So is the Generation X that we're talking about here going to be at the other two elementary schools? Grace?
Generation Genius.
Generation Genius. Generation what?
Genius.
Oh, Genius, sorry.
We'll be at all three of those.
That's correct, all three of the schools?
Yes.
All three schools, okay, thank you.
So I'm going to just give a class size issue, right? There are different numbers between AES and FES. And this is not going to be a one-year problem, we, we need to figure out growth in these schools and how they, I just don't know if we can continue on with just having Free Town students at one school and Lakethole students at another, you know, just based upon the ebb and flows of different pieces, and especially, we're always coming up to this class size piece, so that's just my other, we have to come up with a long-term strategy here and how we work through that.
And we've talked about that before, and you're absolutely right, because it is late in the game when things change dramatically and we're scurrying to figure out.
Well, there, there are places in Free Town that are closer to Assawamsted and vice versa, right, through that. So FES has a luxury of, call it a lease agreement with some of our.
Oh, the collaborative.
Yeah, the collaborative. Have we modified any of those contracts to take in consideration?
Space, for space.
Well, space, increase in heat, increase in inflation. Have we, have we done any of that?
We did not, no.
Okay, so I, I do think we need to look at those, right, as far as that, but I also would like to continue the conversation with Free Town on how do we bring that back into our schools, right? That's a check that goes directly to the town, so is, maybe that's offsetting something, and I know in years past, we've done security cameras and without you.
That's right.
You know, that's, that's a, you know, the district here, we get that lease payment, right? For FES, that payment goes to the town, so is there a way that we can recoup that to go back into Free Town Elementary, right? That's the best course there. So we, we should definitely look at the contracts, right, and, and looking at any pricing changes based upon just the increase of what it costs to run a building, right?
We definitely should.
So, okay. Any other questions for?
Just one, just one on the, on the position, the STEM position.
Yeah, sure.
Could I get a little more background on what that was, other than science, technology, anything bringing up?
No, no, fair, absolutely, fair question, Mrs. Fox. I mean, again, we're just trying to instill, so think about our school right now, we have four specials, art, music, phys ed, library slash social media, uh, social media inside of the media specialist. So we have five-unit schools, so I'm just trying to think of logistically of, of class, so if we have five specials, it makes it a smooth there, right? So why not do something STEM-wise, right? So science, so we think about, just think about just the nature of having that classroom with like innovators, and that's like the next level of like jobs that are out there, opportunities in the economy, right? So for all the students, just like teamwork and collaboration, those type of things, right? And I often just think about that, yes, science is implemented in the classroom, right? But if we can have one every day that the children are going to go to a special over a five-day recurring cycle, that we work on just science-type of standards, or if there's areas of math, because obviously, there's a math portion of it, if there are other standards that we need to focus in on that we just might not be able to get to in that math block that we just noticed from data that we've had, so those type of things. And I also just think of vertical alignment too, not just for Free Town Elementary, right? So vertical alignment, I, I hear, I know Principal Higgins not here, but I hear about the, the middle school has this science-type of work, and I hear the course studies that Principal Desert has at the high school, right? I mean, I also learned during this time, when I advocate for a position like this, my principal colleagues, Ms. Penalt and Dr. Solomon, may say, hey, that sounds like something that might be great at Gray's and AES too. So when you think of it from that point, it's almost like two others if we're really looking at it. So that's advocating for us and my teachers saying, hey, how about this? And the curriculum science leader, Mrs. St. Ag is really pushing, you know, we, we had a blast when we did like sailboats, when we had like a STEM week. We just had a blast doing it, and like the kids really took off with it, right? And if we can do this on, just like we have phys ed every week, right? And don't get me wrong, we're doing science in the classroom, but if we could have this type of study just beyond too for the kids. So that was, that was the purpose behind it.
And I think it's great, and I wish we had.
No, I, yeah.
You know, win the lottery or something.
I got you.
This was a very difficult one to put on the list.
Yeah.
But we, we had to make some decisions in terms of where we wanted to come in with the towns, so.
This one would have been. And if I can say, we're going to be looking, we're going to make our inlets. We've had conversations, the media centers at each of the buildings are potential inlets for those digital literacy standards. for those digital literacy standards. It's one of our lowest areas for exposure to our students in the digital literacy standards and the engineering STEM standards. With it being such a big push with our governor and lieutenant governor, we really need to look at how to do that creatively. If we could hire three more people, one for each of those buildings, that would be amazing because, trust me, I have a million and a half ideas to go into play as soon as we can, including Legos and additional mindstorms.
So, that was just, I wanted to know.
No, I appreciate it, Mrs. Fox. Thanks for asking.
Thank you.
I love this idea.
Me too.
How about if we start thinking about after-school activity? What do we call those?
After the bell.
After the bell.
Yep, absolutely.
That would be a great thing.
No, absolutely, no.
For kids to at least start dabbling in. Maybe we could even get a couple of those classes, after the bell.
I like that.
It's a beginning.
We go incrementally, right, Mr. Ward?
I like it. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Well, I will say equity has been a big part.
Yes.
Which is part of the big reason why there's a media specialist at FES. For years, there was that gap, right? So, we look at that. That's just not advocating for FES. That's going to be, you know, Dr. Sullivan goes, great, I get half my students who've got some STEM background and the other half are playing with Legos or whatever.
They're not playing, they're engineering.
Sorry, I think that equity piece is going to be, no, don't get me wrong. I think that we started with the SEL classroom at one school, and I think we grew into that. So, I think we have an avenue for it to, you know, crawl before we walk and run. But that is definitely going to be a big piece there.
Thank you.
Any other questions on FES?
No, just a comment because I love the idea too.
Thank you.
You could perhaps look at a shared model too where eventually, when the time is right, the position, they flow back and forth.
We had talked about that. Karen and I had talked about that.
Yeah.
Again, and I actually supported, you know, three days in one school, two days in one, and then flop it the next week. But it just came down to, you know, 5.1 concerned me. I don't know where we would have been if we continued to add certain things.
Never mind a scheduling nightmare.
Yep. They would have, they would have.
You can figure that piece out.
Our principals and teachers figure that out.
In that case, I don't think they'd be upset.
They'd love the challenge, I'm sure.
We'll keep pushing.
All right, moving on to GRAZE unless there's any other questions. Welcome. Anybody like to? Okay, I'll start. Why lunch and recess monitors at GRAZE and only GRAZE?
They're not. They're at the two elementary schools as well, primaries.
It's the way the accounts are labeled. It's the way the accounts are reading, the way they're worded, the way they're labeled, the way they're worded in our system. So, for example, if we go to FES, it's the account that says, it's the fourth one down on the top. Salary.
Oh, it's under OT sub.
Yes.
I apologize.
Yeah, I actually, I actually had one less for years, and I didn't know it. And I said, oh, wait a minute, everybody else has a board.
Okay.
Yeah, there it is, okay. Can you imagine a classroom without a monitor?
Can you?
No.
No.
We're feeding the kids, right?
Yes.
Yeah, we're just, Alan Brownie's here, right? Let's go through that. Can you talk a little bit about their request for the guidance counselor?
I absolutely can. Thank you very much for asking. So, in conversation with Alan just the other day, it's not a wish, it's not a hope, it's a priority. When I did, when I did the budget initially with Kara and Alan, I based, I based a request on data. I have pie charts for you. I based it on data from last year, and then since then, I've updated it. And it was part of my school improvement plan as well, that we have to address these social-emotional needs. So, last year, last year, my school adjustment counselor had 152 occurrences of students that she saw. Now, that's outside of the children that she services on 504s and IUPs. That is with 40% were self-requested, children that requested to see the counselor. So, I have, you know, broken down by parent request. It goes mostly by child request. So, 40%, then me saying, can you, can you check in with this child? And a lot of those times, it's because the parents made the request to me. So, 152 last year altogether. Right now, I'm at 117. 117 children, 41 have requested to see the counselor. Outside of the counselor's caseload, 75%. This is, this is reality. This, every time that a child is seen by the adjustment counselor. So, she is, in addition to all, in addition to seeing kids that need services, that need somebody to check in, and these are all, almost all, more 15 to 30-minute periods of time. This isn't a five-minute check-in. The children that she sees with IEP goals, weekly, 12. The children that she sees twice a week, nine. Right now, we have 36 children on 504 plans. This year, I have initiated five emergency 504 plans. So, I say to her that that's broken the accidents on the playground and those sorts of things, or at home, so emergency ones. Community referrals, so, you know, referring out to counseling, 22. And that's, like I said, we're, you know, February 15th. So, we're going to far exceed the 152 from last year. It is an absolute priority.
I will say, just for wording purposes, it's really an adjustment counselor rather than a guidance counselor. We tend to take guidance counselors for a high school, as well as adjustment counselors at the high school. But this is really for the social-emotional side because I don't think Ms. Penini thought this base. To be honest with you. And it's not going to get better. And one of the things that we've talked about, at least that I've heard in all my time here, is we have to figure out how we can help support staff and not overburden them, which is why I say this is a priority for our kids because they can't be serviced the way they need to be serviced as well.
Is, I know with a number of other special education services, we have compliance we need to follow. Does this fall under that as far as the, I know the 504s probably do, but the other 117 requests, is there any compliance or state components that we have to?
So, in terms of counseling, there are recommended caseloads, but there's not a compliance caseload. Which probably isn't the answer you want, but I have to be honest.
Just wanted to confirm just from a naming prevent, thank you very much for that.
Can I just add one thing, Steve? So, one of the things, again, when Alan and I met and we talked, I even had numbers. Alan, remember when we talked about the counselors, you know, I had comparative numbers to the high school and the middle school. And of course, you all know that I was at the middle school for a long time. So, you're talking three guidance counselors, one for each grade, which is absolutely positively necessary, and an adjustment counselor. But, and then I talked about compared to the high school as well. And what Alan pointed out, and appropriately, is yes, but they're, you know, they're doing, you know, college applications and such. And even at the middle school, they're doing the applications to the other schools besides the Ponequid and all those sorts of things. But we're talking just, like I said, completely, and Alan said, just completely about the counseling piece of it. Just simply that. The numbers are startling, how many she sees one single person. Just want, you know, like I just wanted to point out that. I absolutely recognize that they're doing other things. But one, one of the key issues with GRAZE is it's a very, very quick transition in and a very quick transition out. So, that, you know, to my colleagues at the primary elementary levels could say, well, why don't they need them? Okay, but the issue is that they're just coming into us. So, we have one year of settling in, and my fifth graders, I shared just yesterday kindness cards with Alan that children wrote to me, and there were at least three or four that said, I'm going to miss you so much when I go to the, you know, not to toot my own horn, but just in general, miss the school so much. They're already becoming concerned about that transition out. It's a tricky building, and we all know that. It's unusual to have an intermediate level. Thank you.
We are seeing a higher, I don't know if anybody saw the report that just came out on the fears, concerns, harassment, bullying for our girls starting at age 90 and 10. And I can send it to all of you. It's very sobering nationally. Our girls are struggling more than they've ever struggled before, and the transition does not help. There's no question about that. And so, I think it goes back to your statement in terms of what do we look at long-term? But there are some real social-emotional concerns.
And the social media things and the putting the devices in their hands, which we did because we had to, has elevated things. And the cell phones, when I started at GRAZE, Bethany, probably when you were there, no one had a cell phone. The majority have cell phones. You know, I see them all the time. So, all of the social media stuff, all the stuff that I saw as a middle school administrator, I see now at GRAZE.
Yep.
Certainly a much-needed request. Great presentation. I mean, the math just dictates it. Just curious, with the social-emotional goals, the responsibilities for the current adjustment counselor with attending special ed meetings or coordinating 504s. So, there's a meeting element on top of the caseload element.
Absolutely, yes, yep. And I have that too.
So, it's just not.
Yeah, there's, just now, where are my meeting stuff? Parent and collateral phone calls to date 51, IEP meetings to date 23, 504 meetings to date 28, parent meetings nine. So, those, like other parent meetings would be, you know, me asking her to join me with parent meetings. I mean, this is on top of the social-emotional pieces that I do just simply as the administrator.
Thank you.
Just to add to that, I know that in the last three years, I guess, the Department of Ed has really honed in on social and emotional learning. I didn't go to the conferences here. I joined it. I don't know if you attended any presentations, but that seems to be a hot item for the last couple of years, after years of nothing.
Yeah. Bob, I don't think you were here when I did, when we did the school improvement because I can't remember, but when I did my doctoral work in 2015, my whole study was on social-emotional learning. And even then, I mean, certainly, it wasn't new. It wasn't a buzzword, but it wasn't, I did it at the middle school, and my study was actually on how many teachers were familiar with it, how many, what was their, were they able to teach it? Do they understand what it was? Were they comfortable with it? And I had 99% participation rate with my colleagues at the middle school that were in the, in my study. And by and large, they did not. And that was in 2015. They were not comfortable with it. And I mean, now we have, you know, we have a program. We're using it every day. So, this is work that's happening in the classrooms as well, just like there is at the primary level.
Right, but it's really important to understand, and you're right, Bob, it truly has shifted. But we also have to keep in mind that it's happening in the classrooms, but they're not trained professionals to handle. So, you get information or you have kids come out and have conversations or, or parents call and have conversations. It is not a teacher, we put so much on teachers that we can't expect our teachers to become counselors as well. And this is a way to help bridge that so that we can stabilize.
Absolutely. Sometimes that brings it to the surface.
Social-emotional learning has really shifted over the last couple of years since the pandemic into some pretty serious needs for kids, which is the purpose of this.
Absolutely, yeah. These are not the dropping by, it took me a long time at the middle school to figure out why every, it seemed like when I was a teacher, every time I turned around, somebody's dog died. Well, you're 12 and 13 in the middle school, and your mom and dad got married, got a dog, and then had you. So, there's always somebody's dog that's dying. These are not dropping into the guidance counselor because my dog died. These are, these are significant concerns.
And there is an SEL classroom or SEL room at GRAZE?
I have an SEL classroom, yes.
Just to make sure I understand the terminology here, the interventionalness math full-time, that's the math specialist. Is that correct?
No.
No?
No. Unless it's phrased wrong in the thing, but we've had this issue since we, since we got the specialist. The specialist was the addition of the math specialist. The interventionist out of 7.5 hours a week. Individuals is two.
Yeah, so if we could just highlight what that is in the budget.
Yep, so the math specialist. So, that would be, it is under account 0014020435. That should read salary specialist math full-time.
So, 2320435. So, it's that interventionalist line that has math full-time.
Correct.
That's the math specialist. So.
Correct.
My.
And then the offset is under, it shows the S R 3 funding currently.
Get that, but this is a similar issue that I have with grants, right? S R funds are going to go away.
Absolutely.
Right? And so.
Yep. This is the last year.
If I look at even just these three schools, there's a lot of funding from the S R funds that are for resources that are necessary.
Yep.
But we need to find, right? And this is at a budget item where we're at right now with the towns, right? So.
Yeah, absolutely right. We're going to have to find a way. Once those funds dry up, we need to find a way for that math specialist position to stay. She's servicing over 50 children right now.
Yeah, and I'm not saying it's only that.
No, I know.
We need to look at any of these because I think it will be a pain point, right? So, it's not like this is excess, right? And so, beyond the S R 2, S R 3 funds, how are we going to address that? We have a limited amount in school choice, right? But I don't think there's going to be a lot that's going to be, so we need to be creative in that.
I think this is something that really we need to take to the state because the S R funds, correct me if I'm wrong, the S R funds, as I remember, it was 40% had to be used for learning loss.
I don't think that's accurate. I'd really have to go back.
A certain amount had to be for learning loss, and so we put these in.
It might have been.
And we knew that this was going to happen. We all knew that. And we knew we were going to get stuck into a situation now. So, I think we need to go back to the state. I think we need to talk to, I'm looking at you, Jean.
I know you are.
I think we need to talk to our legislatures.
I'm perfectly happy to make that call.
Alan, I think we have to talk to our legislatures because, and I'm sure every city in town has got the same problem.
Every town, no question.
So, every one of them should be complaining. Because what's going to happen now is that this is going to be dumped on the local taxpayer or lost, one way or the other. That's criminal, both of them.
So, our next superintendent, statewide superintendent meeting, I will bring this up.
Thank you. If you have anybody at the state house to.
We should talk to ways and means. That's where you need to go with it.
Well, there's some legwork that we have to do at the local level, right?
Absolutely.
So, we definitely need to.
We need to be prepared.
We need to be prepared. We need to look at different strategies and how we do that, right? So, and I'm not saying that these different positions have different priorities, but there's a reason why we put them in there, they're valued to them.
Yeah, I appreciate you bringing it up.
We're not going to solve learning loss in two years.
No, I appreciate you bringing it up because it's in the forefront of my mind. That position is absolutely essential.
But we also have to keep in mind that the towns are under a similar budget constraints as well. So, through that. Any other questions for Dr. Sullivan or GRAZE building at home?
One more. While we're talking about the math specialist, we had, Mrs. Grace should cut in at the beginning of the school year and do that presentation. Can you tell me how that program is going? And I guess I'm asking, is it kind of a revolving door type?
It is. It is, Sheri. It's going beautifully. Terry was able to join us for our math NE LA data team meetings and see how it worked in action. So, we looked at the winter I-ready data as compared to the fall. And then we identified, you know, first, we identified our successes, our strengths, where were the growths? Did people, did the children meet their stretch goals, those sorts of things? And then we looked at who could use some intervention. And then the teachers will look through and say, who's already having it, who had successes and could cycle out. So, she has, we went through an entire list. We cycled some out and we sent some in. So, I sent, I think Nikki and I sent home, I think about 30. I just chose to let people know like we, like we have done with the reading specialist title one. We always send a letter letting parents know that we have this service and their child was going to be pulled out. I only had one parent decline, but I think we sent home about 35.
And they also looked at.
And she's at like 51. What was that?
They looked at, they also looked at students that were being serviced and were doing well, better, and were benefiting because of that service. So, they didn't just say, oh, they're above the mark now or they're close to the mark, and so we're going to move them out. They did a very thoughtful analysis of the, of the data. And Nikki's also wonderful about pushing into classrooms.
I was just going to say that.
So, we have the pull-out and the push-in, which is really the best model that we can hope for with our interventionist and our specialists.
So, she does, she pulls some out into her small classroom, sort of like what you saw at the presentation. Well, sort of, exactly like what you saw in the presentation. But then, like Terry just said, she's also pushing in. So, she communicated with the teachers, and she, and she's at the math common planning and saying, would you like me to come in? So, when we started out in the beginning of the year, fourth grade, it was fluency, even when she did the presentation, fluency. We've moved beyond that now. So, she might be working on the area model with little kiddos in fourth grade who have not quite grasped that yet, or, you know, doing conversions with the metric staircase in grade five. Or, you know, the, doing conversions with the, with the metric staircase in grade five on those wonderful promedian boards.
Yeah. Do you have a rough idea how many children she works, students she works with per grade level approximately? You said 30?
I'd say, I'd say around 25 because I think, I think we just talked yesterday, I think it's either 51 or 53 right now. I can't remember the exact number, but let's just say rough, 25 is a really good guess.
Okay. That's good.
Any other questions for Dr. Sullivan?
Thank you.
Thank you.
You deserve the right. And I'm going to bring back your, Ms. Penelope, I know right now he has a title one school, correct?
We are.
We are.
Yeah, that was last year.
Yes.
Okay.
We are a title one school this year.
They fall in and out from time to time, so we never do plan for that title one coverage in the event that it falls out again. It can fluctuate, right? So we have consistently been conservative with not planning for it to be a title one school. And then in the event that we do get funding that we're able to utilize, it's just a surplus.
So we are right now.
Correct.
Right, none of our schools are title one schools by the percentages. We fall under the percentage on all of our buildings. However, because of the funding that we do, we do have over 5%, but less than 37%, we get targeted assistance funds and that gets divided out proportionally based on the number of students in each of those buildings. And so, so the buildings get grandfathered in and then the monies get allocated out based on their number of students.
So just to dumb it down for me, it's not like we would get additional title one funds.
No.
Okay.
It's just get reallocated.
In fact, in fact, we're closer to that 5% in.
We are.
Being concerned about dropping below that 5% while we will lose a huge chunk is more my concern.
Okay.
So people need to definitely get their census turned in and.
Okay.
Filling out free and reduced lunch forms is good since that also can be part of our argument, so.
Moving on to the middle school, we'll save all those tough questions, but maybe that you can answer for that, big increase in textbooks in the middle school.
Yes, so I do have, so that's really $9,000 of that increase is for E L A because we brought wonders, I say we, as in Terry and Alan, brought wonders for pre K through five. We do not have this for the middle school. So I think that the request is in there for the committee to consider. It would have to then go through a vetting process similar to all the curriculum. Did I miss anything that you want to add?
No, we've actually started to look at options for curriculum and from open ed resources which, which cost minimal and have to be more created internally to full programs. So Mr. Higgins and I have spoke about how to do that. I additionally applied for a grant for implementing high quality instructional materials because we don't have those currently in that department through the state. So I'm also hoping for some funding on that side.
While I find my answer to my next question, anybody else have any other questions? At the middle school, there is a line item for athletics, but there are athletic fees. Does that offset anywhere in here?
No, because our athletic fund usually runs a deficit, even with the fees collected. Normally it's around $60,000 a year.
But does a middle school athletic fees get put in?
It wouldn't get posted to an expenditure. So those revenues are maintained in a separate fund, the user fees, and then all the athletic expenditures are run through that fund. And then usually at the end of the year, there's a deficit. Right. So we're then having to fund that typically.
But overall, just to go back to the, in, in the assessment sheet, we have a revenue of 60K. Where is that from?
So that's insurance revenue and Medicaid, general unrestricted aid.
Any other, obviously my similar questions arise around supplies and everything else do that. So any other questions from the middle school? Moving on to the high school. So I see we have proposed half of A P exams. So, thank you, because I was confused on that, but. So my concern is how do we choose, right? I'm all support. I think that we should figure out a way to, I know we've dealt the last couple of years the books, you know, aspect of it, but how do we choose which A P exams we pay for and which one we don't?
No, 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 we would be paying half of the test.
You're paying, so we're still, we're only paying half the test?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay.
They've risen to, it's $98 a test, I think, you know.
And most of our kids don't get waivers on them, so we just thought this was a way to help parents.
Yeah.
Preferably, I would love to be able to pay for the whole thing.
This was our compromise.
No, we weren't choosing.
So you're saying roughly 33K is, is what we're looking at?
We weren't choosing some kids and other kids.
Okay. I told you, I needed to be dumbed down for me, so I appreciate that. There was a reasonable explanation for that. The business books, are they new books?
No, the business books are actually programs. They don't actually use textbooks, but they had been put into their supplies in the past. So it was something that I had discovered, so we moved them into the textbook realm, sort of like, oh, the computer science one has a code, science textbook, it's not a textbook, it's code H S, which is used for computer science, Python, Java, all of those computer science ones. So it was really about where it was put. It'd been taken out of supplies before, that's where it had been put, but we determined that the correct place was in textbooks.
Is this, just an example, the, the marketing?
Yes.
There's a word for it. Dang it. Okay, but it's the online.
The programs, yes.
Okay. So the other thing that we have seen in years past, but I don't think it was since pre COVID, we sort of lost the athletic budget. It sort of been, sort of bundled into the high school. I'd like to see where that is, right? I think there's a lot of different pieces in there and I know half gets funded by the athletic fees and the other half is, is the coaches in the budget here. But I think where we lose visibility is where are the uniforms? Where's the equipment? Where's that rotation piece? So just from a visibility perspective.
So it's Fund 217 under revolving funds?
Okay.
Now, I'm not saying that we have done a complete and thorough analysis with the athletic director on that and we certainly could.
Okay.
But his estimates are generally pretty consistent from year to year. So unless he's planning something new. So it's really a combination of what you see in this high school budget, which is typically run through the operating fund and then the athletic fund. And then, as I stated, you know, the expenditures for this athletic fund has typically outweighed the revenues coming in. So then we've had usually around a $60,000 deficit there in a typical non pandemic year.
Noted, okay. The, any other questions from the high school? So just for the, the five schools in here, I really don't see anything that can be considered one time funds.
I agree.
So.
I did review every line item and looked for one time funds there. These to me are level funded budget requests.
Yeah.
With the exception of a few positions that we're requesting the committee to consider.
Anybody have any questions on those five sections? I did like, want to bring up a couple of pieces that pertain to the five buildings and it does go into a couple of the other sections that they involve the five buildings. So heat seems to be one that sort of, there's absolutely no consistency between the buildings.
It's cold in this one.
Well, did you make a donation at the door?
So I don't have that information with me tonight, but I did do an analysis of every single building, the number of gallons and looked at the pricing predictions through 2050. And of course, you can't really rely on that.
No.
But I did, I did look at what might be predicted for next year and comparison to what we have been budgeting here for this current year versus what's been going on in the real world are two different things. So taking into account those pricing differences, how I then plan an actual reduction in price for next year for oil based on the analysis. I forget the benchmark, but I use the benchmark that relates to the United States for that.
Okay.
And I think it does have to do with, the differences do have to do with, you know, the projects that we have done in some buildings versus not others.
Correct.
You know, we have some boilers that are running efficient now in other schools where, you know, we really need to look at that in the future, assuming the M S B A opens up another accelerated repair option.
Related to that, there's several items in here that talk about expenses related to the training project. What we don't see is the promised savings aspect of it. So I do think it's important that we do need to highlight that somewhere in the budget or in the conversations, right? Because that was the main driver as far as this project, it was meant to be cost prohibitive, right? So the, with the fact of.
So we wouldn't see the cash flow for that in this budget, it wouldn't be until the next budget because they're not going to do the first measurement until next year around this time.
And I'll go back, but I thought there was, there is some anticipated savings year one, year two, which.
There was.
Yeah, right?
Yeah, that does, it is factored in unfortunately.
That is.
That is factored in.
Okay.
Because we did a deep cut, I want to say it was last year with that. And unfortunately, the pricing is where we are. Unfortunately, the pricing compared to when we did those deep cuts, we did the deep cuts based upon the usage changes, but then we didn't budget for the pricing to be up. So this year, we're going to run over budget just like we did last year. I would not recommend rolling those figures back. I've done the analysis in two different ways on utilities.
On the, the topic of security, I know is in the, the capital plan, there are, are there built in additional cameras, additional pieces? I know we do have the foyer, I just use an old term language.
Vestibule.
I don't enjoy using the word foyer anymore. Vestibule, thank you. That's a separate piece, right? Security cameras or anything else that's built into this?
Not into the operating budget, but just yesterday I wrote the grant for the security, there's a safety and security grant, for which we hope to get $50,000 per building.
Okay.
So hopefully those cameras on the capital plan will be covered by that.
Even if you get 25.
Right. In addition to the fact of doing the actual lock mechanisms for the vestibules for the second set of doors and then hoping to build in some, the, the beginning of looking at door contact alarms at these, at the various buildings, just for the on campus main three buildings here.
Okay. And then my last piece here, the only thing that I can see in this budget that would potentially constitute one time fund deals with the technology, have we?
I would say the technology, that, that's probably an accurate statement.
Okay.
And of course, I'll scrub through the rest of it and see.
Yep. And then for the next meeting, if we can also, we do have that Chromebook insurance?
That's correct.
We do have?
That's correct.
Are we, are any of those funds utilized to offset any of the technology pieces?
Not at this time because I'm, I'm, I was waiting to see if we could build up the fund balance a bit higher. I could see where we're at. We're still growing the fund. Of course, I don't remember the fund number. I can find it for you, but I don't recall that it's significant at this time.
Okay.
I, in a few years, certainly, I think more of that 2026, 27 timeframe where most of the Chromebooks are going to expire, I think is when I was thinking you'd tap into that.
Okay. Any other questions so that way you don't need to hear me talk? So the floor, I won't thank Mr. Higgins, but thank you very much for your time.
We can extend our hopes for best wishes.
Well, that, that too.
You hope it feels better.
A recovery.
Yeah, that one.
I, I, while I don't speak for everybody, I think we've been very consistent, class size, it's been a very important topic for us and I think we've shown that that's what we want to support and we're going to continue to look at. Obviously that's going to be a concern because we don't know what that will be in that. But on the flip side, you know, as a regional Finkcom, we're trying to figure out how we can put a budget that can be supported by the towns, you know, in this aspect of it. So we did have a great discussion at the last regional Finkcom meeting and, you know, that will continue as a great presence in that particular case. But I just wanted to say thank you for coming. I wish I had more challenging questions for you, but, but I definitely appreciate your time.
You did just fine, Steve. Yep.
Thank you.
Go home before I come up with more.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Steve.
And Steve, on the Chromebook fund?
How much?
We ended last year with 49,000 and to date right now, we have 77. So we're starting to build it up.
I, I think that, you know, at some point, we probably should come up with a strategy that sort of just says, you know, we want to keep a floor, right?
Right.
And maybe there's some residual that goes into, that goes back to capital purchases.
Sure.
I do think that, and one of the things that we've done it from a regional Finkcom perspective is we are not taking anything out of E and D to cover operational based projects. Now, looking at one time funds is a different strategy altogether.
Right, right.
But I do think that, you know, we, it'd be great to come up with that strategy so that way we are looking at how do these things get rolled in for that, so. So for the committee, the next time we will really focus on, I think there's going to be a very healthy debate on special education, right? I think that's a, the lion's share of that. I don't think anyone's arguing the point of that there is a need and what can we do and how do we prioritize things?
So you should have in front of you a breakdown from Ashley?
Mm-hmm.
And to at least give you some introduction and then you can come up with some questions from there for our next meeting.
Yeah, and the concern is here, and I'm sure everyone can read the tea leaves, right? This is a big number for this year. It's not going to get any smaller in a couple of years.
Nope.
Right? So, and that's something that we just need to, to really keep in mind.
Right, and regional Finkcom, the question has been, how can you determine that that's going to be the number? That it's going to be 604.
Yep.
That's where their concern is because they're seeing that that's where, you know, the largest increase.
And that's a valid question, right?
It's also historically a valid question.
Absolutely.
I don't want to say unfortunately, but we seem to do student services in this town very well that people want to move in.
Correct.
Right? So we, we, all over, people are asking and moving into the town because we do this well. That comes at a cost.
Yeah, but you know what? I will tell you that if you look at districts across the state, the numbers are going up.
Yep.
Because the interventions are earlier.
Yep.
And they're not cheap.
Right.
But the lifetime benefit is immeasurable in many, many cases.
You know, and I know we don't compare with other districts. I understand we don't do that.
But I know.
But every conversation that I have with superintendents when we all meet together, the basis for where their budget is is special education, transportation, salaries, heating, oil.
Yeah.
That's it. No one's asking for three and four and five teachers at the high school to teach, you know, extra, those days are done. Those days are done.
Okay. Any last items on the budget before we move on? Okay, 12 regional, subcommittee updates, regional FinCom. We met last Thursday. It was very well attended to, even from the school committee, Jen and Jean and Cherry were also in attendance. The board of selectmen from Freetown, we had board of selectmen from Lakeville, and non-members of them to join it, right? So I think there was definitely an active interest. There was, and by the way, the town administrators from both, you know, very well attended. There definitely was a concern related back from the towns that it is, the number is high. And each town has different reasons, whether it's other safety, you know, Bristol Plymouth coming in from Freetown, there's a number of other pieces here. But I do think the overall consensus, and correct me if I'm wrong, was very well presented, you know, let's continue the conversation, let's figure out how do we make this work in that we have our work cut out for us and how do we need to move forward for it? But, you know, our next meeting is in March after we, the key question is, is really, what's the state budget going to look like, right? And I think this.
March 1, it's still coming on March 1, I read that today, so.
Yeah, I think there's consensus that it's not going to move much for Freetown, Lakeville, but, you know, that's what we'll continue on there.
Remember, there was also some good discussion on things like school choice and what that meant from a budgetary perspective.
Sure.
So that was super important, because if you're looking at it the way was Deb was presenting it, yeah, it looked like we weren't doing well.
It sounds crazy.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But the reality is, we had the space, we filled the spaces, and we're generating some revenue.
Yeah, the hard part is, the number that was being used was 20,000 per student.
That's what she did.
It's really 15,000.
If she wants to pay us 20,000 per student, I'll get rid of school choice.
You know, I do, I do understand. I did, and again, my first time listening from her perspective, I did understand, well, it's costing 15,000 to educate every child.
You're getting five.
We're getting five back. But the reality is, is that's really not true.
That's right.
Because we have open seats. We're not creating more classrooms, we're not creating more teachers. So it's, we just have to explain that a little bit better.
Well, that was my point. It was, I thought, well explained. I think that the questions that came up were all legitimate, and I thought they were well explained.
No question was, all of them were great questions.
Yeah, I thought it was fair.
Right, so, but I, I think that, which is a great, is that they're asking fair questions.
Yeah.
There's active interest from all parties within the towns, right? Not just one player. As I said, all three members of the select board from Freetown, from Lakeville were there. We had Mr. Loefstrom from Freetown there who asked great questions and wanted to dive into it, you know, a little bit more. So overall, good progress in there.
Yep. Excuse me, do you have a date in March for the next meeting?
We do.
We have one though.
It is.
I'd say 15. I think 15.
It's that week, I just don't know, I did write it down, it's part of the agenda for the next one, but there was a lot of scheduling items. We wanted to get to.
March 21st.
Campbell's 15, because we have a school committee.
Because the towns have their budget meetings as well, so.
Yeah, exactly. We went back and forth on that.
While we agree that we're going to meet independently, right, as we get more information, but we're not going to come back as a group, so that way, we can at least come to a consensus at that point.
Are we still planning on having a budget workshop with both towns?
They asked about that, too.
They asked about it?
It's just tough to schedule.
I think that what we first need to do, and as it came out of that, was that we need that state budget, right?
Right.
So that way, the towns have their information as well.
They need their own.
Yeah, so.
Right.
Freetown has not met.
Quite frankly, I think last Thursday's meeting was, is close to a, outside of a full school committee being attendance in that, you know, as I said, we had multiple members from finance committee, select board, the town administrators were there. And quite frankly, not to put words in Ari's mouth, but I believe he was the one that says, if we continue the conversation, apparently, there may not be a need for that, right? But we're still open to it.
And last year, that's the method we utilized, we met directly with the town administrators.
And that worked well.
Yes.
That did work well, so, and that may be just, sometimes it's like herding cats, and it's a busy time of year.
Right.
So sometimes those one-on-ones are more effective.
Yep. Any other questions on regional FinCom? Oh, it was a great time, so if anybody else wants to join.
It is virtual.
Yeah, well, for now.
Well, that one was.
There is no fee to join the meeting, so. 12B superintendent's evaluation committee.
No updates at this time.
Moving on to wellness health committee.
We meet again on March 7, 3 o'clock, it's a meeting.
Policy subcommittee.
Yeah, thank you to Renee for the guidance. I think we found a plan to jump back in. Prior to COVID, we were making some progress with different sections, but Renee was kind enough to bear with me, but also map out a plan. We're hoping to meet next week based on availability, possibly Tuesday, late in the day, whether it's virtual or in person. Should be a quick meeting, so we map out the plan, maybe look at the quick changes to Section A, and then some other items quickly. But there's packets here, but we can catch up and nail down the time, because it needs to be posted. Is that correct? And I think we would be within the timeline for me.
Yeah. Capital committee.
Nothing at this time.
The only thing I want to add is that Karen and I received an email from Ari asking in regard to the feasibility study, what was the scope of the work? So just wanted to put that out there.
Yeah, the master plan.
Master plan, at that time.
That's right.
Yep.
They just want some language as far as what is the scope of the master plan? And they may want to know the timing. I think there were two questions, the scope was really the majority of it, I believe.
And just beyond the scope, can you remind me what the timeline was to bring in potential firms to help us with the feasibility study?
Yep, so we were talking basically March timeframe. I do have a draft RFQ. I do want to go through it one last time before we think about posting it for things like language, for example, you know, awarding of contracts subject to appropriation and/or approval by school committee, things like that. So, and I just want to make sure that the language of the RFQ gives us the opportunities that we want to really look at the whole campus from scratch, if you will, and all five buildings to be included.
Yeah, I thought that that first meeting was very positive, and I'd hate to lose some of the momentum we had from this, letting that drift too long, so that'd be great, if we can stick to March.
It's on my things-to-do list.
Just to comment on virtual meetings, so that law is set to expire the end of March.
Yep.
So unless they extended, we won't be allowed to have a virtual meeting for a public piece. So, you know, Ari did bring it to our attention, so unless it gets extended, March is our last timeframe that we can have a virtual meeting that is slated to be a public, so something to keep in mind.
My guess is there will be an extension.
Okay. Anything else to come before the committee? I just said, in an effort to bring spring faster, can we ask Ms. Fay about scheduling senior breakfast in the spring?
Thank you, I was going to bring that up.
So I got yelled at by Mr. Clark the last time, says I need to carry this board to make sure we get them scheduled. But if we can, March will be here a couple of weeks, so if we can get something on the calendar, so we can.
I would suggest, I'd like to see the end of March.
End of March, okay, well.
So I've already reached out to both towns again, because I figured that was going to be coming up. And they actually suggested maybe after March, just because you never know how the weather's going to be. So they were, they kind of just hinted maybe.
I heard there's not going to be any snow at all.
We're going to have it.
We're holding you to that house.
And then the only other piece, just to go back to the calendar, is when is graduation? Is it the June 7?
We got the invitation. Oh, we mean this one.
The only reason I'm asking is to coordinate, I know we do top 10 here, I know we talked about last year about changing how we do top 10, instead of, you know, having them come to the committee, that we would go to one of their nights, so it's not an extra night.
So you're talking about this year's top 10?
Yes.
Or next year's calendar?
Uh.
Because you're looking at the calendar.
We went to that next year.
Again, thank you for dumbing it down for me. Yeah, I was just asking all of you, yes.
So this year's top 10?
This year, we're good, never mind.
I'll have that answer for the next.
Because we didn't, we just felt that with the other things going on, we could just get on to some of that instead of having a separate, because there's so much for those families to go through.
Nothing is entertaining that they don't come in here with schools.
But some of them were not.
Sports uniforms.
Yeah, no, we're going to do that.
They still have eye black on.
We can do a better job.
I will say, I give Renee and Chris Kenworthy a great deal of credit for, we've had only one overlap of events all year so far. That's why I know that was a concern for everybody, so it's been a positive. I don't want to jinx it, but that's been a positive.
Great, thank you. It is 8:14, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Good night, all.